Okay. Hi, this is Monday, January 11th, and this is the ID4 Mary Hogan School Board, and I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:09 PM. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any public comments? Would you like to make a comment?
Next month? What do we get, three minutes? Something like that.
What do you mean? To make a comment?
Right.
You can make a comment now if you want to.
No, I want to do it next month. But what do we expect about three months? Three minutes?
Um, (laugh) sure. I mean, it's at the chair's discretion. It depends on how many other people are around and whatever else we have on our agenda. But three minutes is totally fine. Yeah?
Thanks.
Great, sure. Okay. Then, the action on the McJolton Fund budget.
So, I have a proposed McJolton Fund budget for 2016-2017 school year. Pass that around. And included in this, the current year and the prior year's budgets, you get an idea of comparison. Note, there are four main items in the past years and a fifth item for this proposed budget. The Keating Environmental Camp Field Trip for 5th grade students. They're proposing $12,500 from the McJolton Fund to be used for that. There's a small amount that we ask families to pay per student. But then, the majority of that we pay for with this dollar amount. There's a Boston Field Trip for 6th graders. That's entry fees into various museums that are there, and the bus trip down and back. Proposing $5,300 for that trip. The special events, these are payments that are made to artists who come and perform at school. We have three primary physical education programs that we pay for with $9,600. That includes swimming for 1st and 2nd graders, the ice skating for 3rd and 4th graders, and adventure wall climbing for 5th and 6th graders. And that includes all the fees associated with those activities, to include things like equipment replacement for wall climbing, fees at the swimming pool, rink time, et cetera. And we are suggesting $3,200 for field trips, and that would be to include both entry fees or bus costs for the coming year. That would be a supplement to another part of the budget where there's a significant transportation line item for field trips. Questions?
Lorraine.
Two questions, I guess. One, I'm assuming the waiting number is lower because it's a small class?
Yes.
And the new field trip entry is that because you're trying to keep our regular budget lower?
Yes. So, we think we can use some funds from here and not exceed the amount that we have in the spending pool from the McJolton. Knowing that McJolton is primarily in Richmond, we see those field trips as that.
I think that's a good choice.
And again, you see probably a smaller change for the Grade 6 Boston trip because that's mostly the fee for the buses, the prettier buses that take them down and back. So, it's two buses. It's going to be two buses, whether it's a relatively big group of three classes or not.
And Vermont Sun and the ice skating, they're going to keep their prices the same for us? You don't see any increases coming?
We realized some savings through a change in, we shopped around a little bit for another provider for our adventure wall inspection. And we went, there were primarily two choices there, and we went with a different choice, and we realized some savings there. So, we've anticipated that bring fees and swimming might be slightly higher. You're welcome.
So, we did not receive, unfortunately, the 12-quarter earnings statement from Peoples United Bank. So, this is just Tom's best estimate for the payment outs for the McJolton Fund. I wonder, have you, what is the percentage increase? I'm a little concerned because the fund itself didn't perform as well as we might have hoped, and have, increasing this budget, I'm not sure is, will remain at the 4.5%. This may be over what the 4.5% is. So, I'm wondering if it might be more prudent to be more conservative.
Well, did we use the full 4.5% last year? Is that the 3070? Does that represent 4.5%?
So, that's our current year, and that's why we've listed as anticipated expenditures. So, we won't know until, all, Keating hasn't happened for the year. Boston hasn't happened for the year. I don't think we've paid for anything out of special events just yet. And I won't have final figures on the PE programs until the end of the year.
What about the 1415? Was, do you know, was the $29,000, was that the full 4.5%? I'm just trying to...
Well, right, you still should have estimated, even though we don't know what the 1516 anticipated expenditures are, we give a lot of money to 1516. So, was that money, 4.5%? Could be a lot of savings.
Yes.
Last year's was, yes, yes. That's what we budgeted last year.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
That's what we budgeted.
Yeah, so this is a 4.8% increase in the budget, which I don't think we'll have enough revenue to do that.
Yeah, it's hard to know without that.
So, if we dropped the 32 under, does that, what does that mean?
If we dropped the...
And if we reduce the field trip amount out of the children, would you need to increase it at the main school budget?
Those are estimates right now, and there is some, we'll have some discretion in the total number. We have discretion in the total number of field trips that are taken in a given year.
Seems to me that if we went down to, just to level funded it at 30,070, then we could still keep some in the field trip budget, but it would just not be the full 3,200. And if we level funded the budget, I think that would be safe, given that we don't have all the data. So, that would mean, sorry, (laugh) there's got to be an easier way to do it, but, so, 31,500 minus 3070. Wait, that did not work. Why did that not work?
1,030. Yes, exactly.
So, it's 14, so you take, oh, 1430. So, clear, 3,200 minus 1430. So, 1770 instead of 3,200. It's about, and that would just level fund the budget at 3070.
Is the 3070 the actual budget for this year or the anticipated expenditures? Is there a difference?
There is a difference, and what...
What is the actual budget for this year?
The actual budget is 3070. It's the 3070. We're not going to know until the end of the year, but we've paid out, but we'll keep track of that as we go through the year.
Right.
But you should not be spending more than the 3070.
Correct.
Yeah.
And here, it says anticipated expenditures, so I just didn't know if that was the actual budget for this year.
That is our actual budget.
That's a good question, Amy.
That was the one, or that was the amount that was listed. So, 3070 is the amount listed in the end of the year.
So, the change would be 12,500 for Keith Waden, 5,300 for Boston, 900 for special events, 9,600 for phys ed, and then 1770 for field trips.
Do you feel comfortable that that will be at 4.5%?
I don't think it will be exactly at 4.5%, but we don't have the 12th quarter.
Is it 4.5%?
This is last year's 4.5%. The 30, so if we level funded, I think it's, the fund went up a little bit, but it didn't, I don't think it went up as much as this budget would, the proposed budget would have allowed for.
Increase 1.9%?
Yeah, that was the la, without the 12th quarter. Now, it's a rolling average, so it's not necessarily what is in the last year, so it includes previous, obviously, 12 quarters is three years.
The last 12 quarter average market performance is a lot better than the last year's last 12 quarters.
Exactly. So, it's going to be more than 1.9%, but I think it's prudent, since we don't have the data, to be just more conservative with the budget.
And the total value is 760, is that right?
That, yeah. But, is everyone comfortable with that? Tom, you okay with that?
Sure. We won't over, you know, we won't overspend that amount.
I mean, would this result in cutting the field trips that you would otherwise plan to do, or would you look at that in the main budget and sort of, you know?
If, when I get the number, we'll, we'll then be able to determine the 12th quarter average. And I'm assuming that no question the board would, the board would deem it okay to spend up to that amount, unless they're directing me now not to exceed the 3070, and if that's the case, I won't.
Right. I mean, do we have the ability to, once we have that information, to adjust?
Well, this will go in our annual report, which is, which is being...
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend proposing and approving a budget tonight, and then getting the close numbers, and then changing it.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, I mean, I think, given the amount of money we're talking about here, I guess I'm not concerned about this curtailing our ability to do the field trips that we already have planned.
Sure.
You already put in a huge amount of budget money.
Can I give you an example that might help to clarify your concern about what might happen for an individual class? So, Mesa will give a significant amount of money, some $900 or $800 per grade level from the fundraising effort from Rena thought. So, if the class has that money, and they know there's a, there are a certain number of field trips, they could use that money to purchase additional books for a classroom library. They could, and classes do, use those funds to go on a trip, to go to do a field trip that's curriculum-based. So, I, whether we're at 31,500 or we're at 3070, we're not going to be withholding a...
There's other sources of funding?
Yes, there are other sources of funds of which we'll have discretion over.
There's $10,000 in the budget for new money in the budget for field trips. If anything, I think we're over-budgeting for field trips in this budget. This is a huge increase in our field trip costs. Huge. So, I'm interested to hear the rationale for that, because when we get to the regular budget, yeah, but we should see some savings in other parts of the budget for that. So, do we have a proposal for this McJolton Fund budget? Or do we have a motion for this?
We move to accept the McJolton Fund budget for $30,070.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Then, we're moving on to the larger budget.
Slightly larger.
Slightly larger budget. So, I know we just got this revised budget just very late in the day today, so I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look over it, but Peter, if you want to give us some of the...
I can kind of walk you through. It's more or less what you got on Thursday with a few, a few small changes.
This is the budget that we rescind a couple of hours ago.
Yeah. Right, but I'm saying, the one you got in the mailing on Thursday...
Right, that's different.
Is, is almost identical to this, except for there are a few changes. So, I can outline what those changes are. So, looking at the estimated finance page, the, no changes in terms of the total budget between Thursday and today. Revenue change, we did get newer numbers from the state with a new calculation for transportation aid. So, we had $90,000 in transportation aid, which, as you probably noticed, was a big departure from the trend. We've had a 52, 59. So, that number is 65. That's the final number for transportation aid. The, no other changes in terms of revenue there. We've kept the Ed Reserve, as you talked about last week, at 150. That does leave us with 192,000 left in Ed Reserve, roughly. This budget is currently 65, if, if that 150 is approved, that leaves us with 65,000 under the cost containment threshold. I know, in talking to legislators locally, and you all have been reading about this on Digger and elsewhere, that there's intense conversation right now about what happens with the cap. What I'm hearing is there are a couple of different proposals being aired out there. I think the two likely ones, if there is a change, are going to be waiving the health insurance increase. So, that would be, the state would be looking at maybe a 2.75, a 2.8, 2.9 overall increase statewide, and then they would look at how that pertains to the per pupil amount that we're allowed. And as you remember, it's variable, so every district has a different allowable growth in FY17 and FY18. Or, there's the potential that it could be lifted as well. My feeling, in terms of what I'm hearing, is I, I think there's enough momentum that they want to keep something in place, so if there is a change, I think we would see that increase slightly in the number. But I don't think that's going to affect us either way, you know, because we're currently under by $65,000. We had, there was an update on the base per pupil spending, so that property yield rate was lowered from 99.50 in the last budget to 98.70. So, that does have implications. If it goes down, they're having to raise more taxes. The tax rate is going up. The tax rate implications for this budget are a total of an eight-cent drop in tax rate when you look at the elementary and secondary. When you look at the elementary, it's a one-cent increase currently. That's the estimated elementary component of homestead tax rate equalized, about halfway down under tax rate estimates. And CLA was mostly flat, 91.48 to 92. So, that's kind of an overview of where this budget is, and I'm happy to answer any questions about specifics within, items within, and Tom may have more information on application of those funds within the school.
Do you want to just take a minute to look through it? Because that's exciting TV to watch us all look through the budget.[1130.12][1130.12](laugh) But we haven't had much time with it, so...
I have a question on the salaries. I want to know if the first one, or if it's gone to anything, does it show up somewhere else?
You'll notice an increase in early retirement and a decrease in salaries, so this is anticipating some of those voluntary separations.
And I was just going to ask you to, if you could give me a breakdown of what that number is exactly.
Okay. So, there's a, you'll notice a 3.29% increase overall for, this is 1,110, that's regular Ed salaries. And that includes the staffing changes that occurred since the last budget, and there were some, there were some retirements, and the addition of a foreign language teacher and an interventionist with a reduction in one classroom teacher. So, it's a net gain of one regular Ed teaching position. We, in the budget that is proposed here, we are proposing two interventionists for next year, one that would be paid for within this regular Ed line item, the other that would be paid for with a grant fund. So, again, that's a net gain of one teacher. There are two positions added, an interventionist and a language teacher, and a reduction of one regular Ed position. That's, they're currently four second grade classes, and when they move forward to third grade, we're anticipating those four classes going into three.
I was just curious about the world languages, too. How do you see that changing the school day for the kids? What is something going to be taken, this time going to be taken away from something? Is it going to be like a daily or a weekly?
In all likelihood, it's grades 3 through 6 with two, two second language, world language classes per week for students in those grades. So, yes, that time will come from somewhere. There's a chance that it'll come from social studies, and that would be the likely place in the, in that mix. We're working through schedule possibilities right now, and the school leadership team's working with me. And I don't have a formal new schedule just now, but I've already done some background work on it. All right.
Isn't social studies already kind of short shifted with science? I thought that neither one of them got really full.
Those are, social studies and science are, again, oftentimes, you'll, you'll find time in a day for one or two specials. Language could be that second, would be that second special. 90 minutes of English Language Arts, 75 minutes of mathematics. Social studies or science, some of this time will likely come from some of that social studies, that social studies dedicated time right now. But it'll be, it'll also be up to work with individual classroom teachers and teaching teams to determine where that's going to go in your schedule.
I hope not.
I hope not.
That's what I was getting at.
Well, seriously, I mean, that's a big issue.
I'm serious, I'm serious, too.
I'm serious.
We have, we have not moved, we have not moved toward taking students' recess time almost across the board. We maintain, most of our students here will get, lower grades often are getting 13 recesses in a week, and 13 and not 15, because on the two days that they have phys ed, they may back off from two of those recesses, but that's typical. And older students are often getting a minimum of eight, with also with that phys ed, with that phys ed sort of contingency. And then they might, teachers might also, are encouraged to throw in an additional oxygen break, which might be a very brief outside runaround for a short period of time. We've got classes that start the day with what I, I always think of as sort of zero hour, zero hour phys ed, where they're, you'll see that as a regular starting point for a lot of classes in the building, and they'll be outside at the beginning of the day also. So, we're committed to continuing students moving so that they're ready for learning.
Are there other questions about the budget? So, last week, we had asked you for some further information about the bus and where we would see savings in the budget for that, and what the rationale for it is.
Another handout? So, let's, around, I'll give you some background information on the bus. So, we purchased a bus in August of 2005. It was a model year 2006 international school bus, so it's, it'll be about 11 years old at the end of the school year. We paid $70,000, shy of $71,000, and that was from the Jolton Fund in 2005. To give you some idea of, what do you, what's the residual value of the bus? We sold, in 2009, we sold a 1994 bus for $814 of scrap metal to the wire wheel. And that's older than the one that we currently have, but that might give you some idea of what the residual value might be of the bus of the age of the bus that we have. In the 1415 school year, we looked back into the budget. We're spending just, just under $10,000 to maintain the bus. That's repair, repairs, gas, tires, et cetera. And there's a salary line item for the driver of approximately $14,000. Now, that's the, that's a combination of within a person's eight-hour day, but it also creeps over and causes a slight overtime payment of each day in order to get that bus run done by our maintenance supervisor. So, in the coming year, I'm proposing that the cost for the driver, salary and benefits, would all be allocated, would be shifted to maintenance, because a maintenance supervisor would then be doing all of his work here at school in a maintenance, custodial capacity. So, we get a $2,000 savings from the current amount of, that's the current overtime that we're currently paying for those bus runs, because it extends his day. Couple items that I think are important in considering this. Maintenance supervisor would no longer be away from school. He would be here for maintenance and custodial responsibilities, of which there are many. And I would say currently, three to four hours per day is my estimate of the amount of time, on average, that we might not have him present here doing the normal custodial maintenance work. And it also has left us, and we've managed this, but it leaves us in a situation where during arrival and dismissal, we don't have a, we don't have a custodial person here in the building. So, we've got someone, one, one person's doing a short crossing guard duty, but that's daily before and after school, and the maintenance supervisor driving the bus. And this would also shift liability to the bus company, and give us some other gains, like having a substitute driver if your driver's out, being responsible for roadside, roadside assistance, or providing a bus if one is down for a maintenance issue. And this does shift all our transportation coverage to, for field trips, to the same bus company that provides some of those services now, but it does shift it all to the current provider.
Are there questions for Tom about this?
So, where is it? What's our increase in bench spending, goes from what to what?
If you go, I'll show you where that is. If you go to the last page, page six, it's account 2720. Yes, account 2720, field trips, goes from 1,000 to 10,000. It's $9,000. And it's my estimation that that increase of $9,000 with the amount that's also in the Jolton and the other contingencies that we have for field trips, like the Mesa funds that are made available to classrooms, will allow us to meet our, allows to meet our field trip needs for the coming year.
Go ahead, Jason.
So, we have a pretty standard number in locations for field trips that we do annually, right? And most of the field trips that we use that bus for are ones that we typically do in any given year, right?
Typical.
So, we have sort of a rough annual mileage for that bus, right? We know how much time our dri, you know, you've got a time estimate on how much driver, so it seems to me like it should be pretty easy to figure out what our cost essentially per mile for, or per hour for running this bus and maintain, including all the maintenance and everything is, right? And I think... And I think what would make sense to me when trying to analyze whether this is a good idea is to compare that to what our, what we can expect for our costs from Betscha for, for that same, those same services, right? Do you have a sense of what that comparison looks like?
I don't, I haven't done that.
Do we know?
Well, I think we could add up, I mean, if you look at what the current cost is of maintenance and...
Right, so we have some of that right here, right?
Yeah, we, I think we have some of that.
Ninety-eight forty-six, you've got the salary and benefits for the driver, the fourteen-two fifty-nine. That's a separate salary item, or is that embedded within the custodial supervisor line item?
That's, that's the portion of his salary.
Yeah, it's embedded.
It's embedded.
Okay. So, but that's roughly what you estimated is the amount of hours and costs associated, right? So if you were to hire somebody else to do that, that's roughly what you would budget? To hire somebody else to do that, the driving that he does?
I think we'd be over that by a bit if we were to hire that.
If we had the contract driver or something?
Right, if we were to, because you're going to get him, so we're using someone who's getting an eight-hour day with benefit, an eight-hour plus day with benefits to do that work. If you were to look for someone who would be available some days but not others, some days for full, some days for partials, that's, you'd, I'd anticipate that you'd pay more than that if we were to hire them.
Okay. So, what, twenty thousand?
Sure.
Right, and so we've got another ten thousand to operate the bus, that's thirty thousand dollars a year. Do we know what our cost is to, if we hire a Betscha for a field trip, how do they, how do they bill that out?
They bill it by hours and miles.
Hours and miles, so do we have an example of a field trip?
A trip to the Flynn and back might cost three hundred dollars.
Total?
Total.
Okay.
That's a lot of trips in Flynn and back.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Hopefully we go somewhere else too.
If you weren't selling the bus and moving to this model this year, would we need to replace the bus anyway? Like, would we then be buying another seventy-one thousand dollar bus?
In fourteen fifteen, we spent almost ten thousand dollars on repairs. Gas is a significant portion of that, but there's some repairs in there. The bus is getting to the age where there are some things that are starting to go wrong with it that make, that, they're the kind of things that, when they start to go wrong with your car, you're wondering about when it's going to start, that you've paid for, you've heard that the car's paid for, but when it's going to start to cost you money. We have it regularly maintained, but there, it's an eleven-year-old bus that's used multiple times, and it's, it's heading toward the end of its useful time.
Do you know what the, the resale is on it currently? What the, like assessed value when we go to sell it?
No, I didn't check on that in the past.
Well, as an example, Commercial Truck Trader has a number of buses ranging from two thousand and four to two thousand and eight that range from ten thousand five hundred to eighteen thousand dollars in value, so who knows? But probably somewhere.
How many miles are on our bus?
I didn't check.
Certainly it's not eight hundred and nineteen dollars or whatever, it's fourteen dollars. I'd buy it for that.
It's worth, it's still worth something.
I know, I was going to say.
And it's not rusted out yet, and I think that's part of the...
It certainly is more saleable now than it would be if we ran it until it was no more, no longer usable.
So in addition to, on the other side, you're essentially getting a point five FTE increase in custodial services, because you said three to four hours of his day is going toward driving the bus. And that is now going to go toward custodial services. This is the first, I think, we've heard that you need an extra half FTE for custodial services. This also was told to us last week that it was being driven by the central office, and that it was the central office who wanted to sell the bus. But we have no analysis from the central office on why we should sell the bus. We have no data on the cost of the bus, the use of the bus, the value of the bus. I have to say, I'm a little disappointed in this analysis. So I think that we should be seeing a lot more savings in this budget if we're getting rid of the bus, and we don't have a justification for the need for another half-time custodian.
I mean, the decision to sell the bus didn't, you know, didn't emanate necessarily from the central office. I mean, Tom and I have had conversations about, about it, and, and looking at having it kind of a, an employee working both in custodial and doing this work as well, and that, you know, in terms of continuing to provide this service, it didn't necessarily make sense anymore, given the, the costs, given the fact that Betscha is, is pretty reasonable in terms of arranging field trips, and it allows us to have an employee that's not doing two really kind of separate roles. And he fell into that because there was a need, and hey, who can do this, and, and he stepped into the role. In terms of the staffing, the custodial staffing, Tom, how many hours is it, do you think?
Well, it's, in terms of how much time he's spending driving the bus?
Yeah. Per day?
Forty-five minutes or so on the either side of each day, so ninety minutes a day, plus another eighty-some days when there may be a field trip of some length, from a full day when it might lose him to a partial day.
So, but I understood from your analysis that, that using, using that position to drive the bus is, is driving overtime costs for us?
A bit, a bit, two thousand, two thousand dollars.
So, and then we talked last meeting about sort of how, you know, what, what alternatives we would use to sort of fill in some of those more specialized transport that the bus, having the bus fills now for families who need that. So in addition to sort of that pretty basic cost analysis differential, you know, between, okay, what is it going to cost us to use Betscha for these services versus what is it costing us now? I was hopeful that we were going to have some better information on sort of what, you know, what the cost of those services that we use the bus for, other than the standard runs and field trips, how that might compare so that we could know that. What, what I'm worried about, right, is that we approve a budget, it has increased transportation funds in here, but if we don't, if we sell the bus, you know, do we get in a situation where we don't have money in the budget to, to continue to support the kinds of more specialized transportation that we might do now? Or, yeah, certainly having a company like Betscha available to do field trips, if one bus is down, they've got another, you know, there are, I, I can certainly see advantages to doing, contracting those services, it's why we use them for our primary transport. But I, I just, I, it's the mar, it's sort of the things around the edges of that primary transportation service that I'm, I'm not really understanding how this is, how this is going to work out. I mean, I certainly understand that it could. I'd like to know a little bit more about how.
What are those special?
Right, are there individual kids who are being transported by the bus, outside of regular bus runs?
There are occasions when that happens, or there are periods of time. It, it varies greatly within a given year. It's a, and it's, it's, it's often a transient need. It'll happen for a short period of time. For instance, you might offer a family, as we have in the recent past, you might offer a family transportation in from a shelter on their first two or four days when they're getting a schedule worked out, or something of that type. But it's transient, and then it moves, then it moves on.
And that's the kind of thing that you could hire a cab, but...
If you'd be, you could certainly do that.
Small enough and infrequent enough that we don't need to own a bus in order to...
Right, you don't need the whole bus for it.
Right, you could hire a cab, you could.
But we would want to take a look at what that really looks like, because I mean, you know, we need to understand the, yes, that can vary from year to year, but it's, I don't know that it, I, I don't know that it's rare, that there's need like that. You know, there are alternative bus runs that are going, I've talked with you about those in the past, so I know that that's not an irregular thing. Is that, am I incorrect on that? I don't want to be...
I don't really like the characterization as rare. The characterization is, it's transient and varied in any given year.
But, but I wouldn't, it doesn't seem to me like it's an infrequent occurrence.
Right, so this year, how many times thus far have there been, have needs like that risen?
A few dozen.
Days, weeks, I mean, what, you know, what do you?
A few dozen days or a few dozen?
A few dozen trips.
So that's at least thirty-six times already in half a year?
You guys are asking for specific numbers that I'm not, that I didn't come to this meeting prepared to give you.
So I'm, I am concerned with what you're bringing up, but I'm also concerned that it seems to me that one of the things that's driving this is clearly a personnel, effective use of our personnel. I understand that, that makes sense. But what the result of more effectively using our personnel means is that we have a half FTE increase in our custodial staff. So that's an increase to our budget. It, allegedly, one of the things that's driving this decision is cost savings, but I don't see any cost savings in here. I see, I see four hundred and thirty-seven dollars of cost savings, and I see a pretty significant increase in the salaries of our operation and maintenance, a six point one-one percent increase in maintenance salaries. And most of the maintenance things are increasing. Where are we seeing savings in our liability insurance? Are we seeing savings in our overtime costs? Where, where are the other savings showing up in this budget? Besides this ninety-four thirty-seven on purchase transportation services? Are, are they showing up anywhere, or are there savings? Or are we just increasing our custodian budget by half a position?
Well, but we wouldn't be increasing the custodian, because he's already being paid.
We're essentially, because right now, what we're hearing from our administrators is that half of our lead custodians' time, four hours a day, up to four hours a day, are going toward driving the bus.
Right, so we're increasing the time but not the budget, because he's already being paid?
He's already being paid, but we're moving his time, we're increasing the custodian budget and decreasing the transportation budget. So we're, we're saying we need an extra half time of a custodian, because that person will no longer be driving the bus for half of this day.
We get that value in terms of care of the building?
Yes.
I, I understand that, but this, but has this been a problem? Has this been something, this was not something that we'd heard about until it came up with the whole bus thing? So that is a...
I mean, in terms of what Tom and I talked about previously, I mean, I think part of what got this ball rolling in terms of looking at making a change here was issues that Tom was having with having this employee doing these two separate jobs and not having an employee here in the morning, because, because he's been out doing bus runs, and it's been kind of scattershot in terms of the care of the, the facility. So I think that, in terms of our conversation, that's kind of where this started. And then we started looking at, you know, the cost of the bus and, and looking at other alternatives to, to see if there was another way to, to make this work out. I don't, I don't think overall, this is not, I, I think it's fairly flat. I don't think it's a huge cost savings when you factor in everything. I think it improves our, in terms of liability, I think it, it allows us to not take on that liability. You're probably all well aware of our history in that area with transportation, and we have had some fairly protracted involvement in, in, in some liability issues. So that, that's another benefit as well. I, I think what we give up, and what I think a number of people have mentioned, is we give up the, the kind of the flexibility we currently have of having our own rig and being able to do both small and large. And so that's, that is something that we're, you know, we have, we would have to adapt to a different mode. All of our other schools, you know, don't have a school bus like Mary Hogan has, and so they have adapted and take care of those needs in, in other ways.
So if I'm to understand the request in a way that makes more sense to me, tell me if I'm getting this right. It was not intentional for the maintenance supervisor's position to be, to be also a transportation position in that we need to bring, you're, you're saying that we need to bring that position back fully to, to maintenance and address transportation differently?
Yeah, it's not, not my request, it is my recommendation.
That, that, that's a need, to have that person not being, providing transport, but actually be providing maintenance services. Or that's a, that's a need that you're expressing to us as well, okay? So that's sort of one question, right, like, say, okay, so then how do we fill the transportation need, right? So this, your proposal is that we contract our transportation now, we no longer maintain a bus, we don't have a paid driver, but that we use contract services of varying sorts to fill the transportation needs that we have, right? Okay. So if I, if I'm to look to this budget to see, to understand the financial implications of that move, where should I be looking?
If you looked at transportation purchased field trips.
Bottom of page five.
Twenty-seven eleven, bottom of page five. You'll see a, you'll see a thirty-three thousand dollar increase, a twenty-three percent increase. That's an additional bus run plus the anticipated additional costs for bus services for the year.
Okay, and then contracted services is that where you anticipate the costs for some of those more sort of infrequent here or there kinds of uses, or is that something else? Twenty-seven eleven, five nineteen. Four thousand dollar increase from twenty fifteen sixteen, although flat from fourteen fifty.
Yes.
So that would be that sort of, providing funding for those sort of flexible needs that come up, that...
The four thousand dollars?
So that's to cover those kinds of things?
And that might be, that, that might be individual students that we transported via cab, for instance.
Right, okay. All right, and then can I, I, what I, I'm confused about the next page, twenty-seven twenty and twenty-seven twenty-one. The field trips goes up again because we're not going to have our own bus, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and then the ninety-four thirty-seven decrease, what is that?
That?
What kind of purchase transportation is that? Is that something completely unrelated, or? Because I thought we were increasing our purchase transportation services overall, so what is this line item?
So those amounts, I think, are reflected in twenty-seven eleven, through those, through those different line items in twenty-seven eleven.
So it's just moving this, that budget over to this?
It's moving that up, so our, okay.
So the net?
So roughly, our net increase is somewhere in the order of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Is that thirty-six thousand dollars, is that right? Between those sections?
Nine.
This is being just essentially moved to here, we take the thousand dollars out of that, but then we've got to add that back in, so.
It's an increase of about, of thirty-two thousand five hundred ninety-five.
Okay. So for thirty-two thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars, that's, we can understand that to be sort of on an annualized basis. Is that roughly right?
Yes.
Okay. As opposed to what we're now spending annually of ten thousand dollars operating the bus, it'll cost us roughly twenty thousand dollars, you're estimating, to contract a driver or a couple of drivers to be able to fill those needs, is that right?
Yes, and we're getting close to the point that we don't have-
Right, set aside sort of the issues of-
-a bus that's paid for purchasing a new bus.
Right, so at some point in the next, say, five to ten, to eight years, a new bus purchase also amortized into that mix, right?
Three to five.
Three to five.
I wouldn't want to go, I wouldn't want to go eight with this bus.
Which is sort of where we land with your suggestion that it's roughly a break-even proposition either way.
What does happen with the liability insurance? Like if we, so now we insure the bus and the driver? We don't have the bus and the driver, and Betcha pays the insurance? Is there any change, like what about line twenty-six hundred five twenty-three, property and liability insurance? Should that change if we no longer insure the bus and the driver?
The-
Where is that insurance money?
We, we're covered under visbit for liability, so we pay a lump sum to visbit. So I don't believe there's any savings as a result of, of that. That's, I mean, the property and liability insurance is flat, and this is just-
Whether or not we're insuring the bus and the driver, we're paying the same amount in insurance.
Right.
What about workers' comp? Does it change for his position here or his position driving?
What's that?
Workers' compensation. Does it change the rate?
That I'm not sure of. If, if his workers' comp, I don't, I don't think it would, I don't think it would for their position.
And why do the salaries in operation and maintenance go up by so much, the six point one percent?
So a portion of that happens because of the, the money that goes back into, that goes back into salary and benefits that were, that are currently being paid out of transportation because it's the custodial, it's the custodial employee's portion of his salary that he's not spending as a custodian. So that was shifted to, that was shifted to transportation.
Out of, so we should see that shift in transportation?
Right, and that may be, you know, the more I think about Jason, I think that's the ninety-four. That's the almost ten thousand dollar saves.
So that should be transportation salaries, not purchase transportation services? Is that why we're getting confused, because it's called the wrong company?
It could be, because we're purchasing, we're purchasing his portion of his, of that time out of that twenty-seven, in twenty-seven twenty-one.
So the increase is more than thirty-two, not five nine five, because we're seeing this increase in custodian salaries. So it's not a wash.
Some of that custodian salary, it would just get an increase, it would get increases every year, the way the teachers get a percent increase every year?
Of this, of this six, point eleven, three percent.
We have three percent.
By regular salary increases.
Roughly, yeah. And we did add, we did add a contingency for having a certain number of anticipated substitute custodian days in there, when we might have a certain number of custodians. If we had more than a second custodian out, we might want to hire a substitute custodian to perform their duties for the, or during the day, depending.
It makes sense to me to pay people for what they're hired for. So, I mean, I think if the, the question here is, I need to pull this position back fully into maintenance like it's supposed to be, and to fill that void, we're going to purchase this other transportation services. That, that's one, to me, that's sort of a separate question from whether or not we need the bus, in some ways, right? Because it's, it's, that's really a personnel issue and a resource issue for how you allocate your personnel. Whether or not we keep or dispose of that particular asset, I think is not necessarily tied to that. I think that's a decision that can flow from the change in operational approach that you're recommending, which is no longer having that person driving the bus for regular transportation and contracting that out. And then, you know, if, if we need the bus still and use the bus still, then that's a different question for down the line. But I mean, I don't, I don't have a sort of a philosophical objection actually saying I need the maintenance supervisor, being a maintenance supervisor, not a bus driver. I mean, that's, that makes sense to me if, if it's a need, right? What I wonder is, is contracting with Betcha, our most, and various cab services, is this the best approach from your perspective, from a cost perspective, providing the transportation services that we're not going to have if we pull the maintenance supervisor back into maintenance full-time?
As opposed to hiring a driver almost as, on a per diem basis that we might use from here to use our bus?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the alternative is.
That'd be, would be one of the alternatives.
I don't even know that's a good idea.
That would move us away from some of the savings we'll realize by not owning the bus.
I don't, we're not realizing any savings by not owning the bus. We've, we've just tracked it. It's more expensive to get rid of the bus, and, except for if we can actually get some money for the bus, but that's only a one-time thing.
I think what I was responding to is Jason saying if we bring them, bring our maintenance person back full-time doing operations and maintenance and keep the bus, and then hire a driver who might drive some of the time, we're then, we're then not going to see any savings that you would see from just the getting rid of the bus portion of this discussion.
But so your contention is that Betcha is cheaper than owning the bus and paying a driver part-time?
No, I'm not suggest, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if we, that if, if in fourteen fifteen, we spent ninety-eight hundred dollars to maintain the bus, repairs, gas, tires, et cetera, in all likelihood, we'll be spending about two, about ten thousand dollars per year.
Assuming similar use, maybe increasing because of increasing repairs as the bus ages, right? Plus the personnel costs.
So where's that ten thousand dollars coming out of the budget? It should be coming out of operations and maintenance, or?
Yeah, where does it live?
Where, where does it live? Because it's not the purchase transportation services, it's not, it should be somewhere else in the budget.
The, the cost, the transportation cost, taking the sale of the bus out of the equation was a hundred and fifty-four, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So when we look at the, you know, the-
Where's?
The three thirty-one line, purchase transportation services.
Okay, that's to and from school, right?
What was a hundred and fifty-one?
A hundred and fifty-five.
A hundred and fifty-five, where?
So that, you don't see that number here, I'm just telling you, but behind the one sixty-six, eight sixty-eight.
Okay.
And the other cost is, one fifty-five is the kind of the, what we were proposing prior to-
This proposal.
Yeah, prior to this, so that just-
So a pre, before this proposal budget would have shown one fifty-five in that place?
Right.
So, but, but, so then we're increasing it by eleven thousand over what we would have increased it. So I guess still my question is, where are the savings? You say it's savings, I don't see any savings. Nobody has pointed to any savings. We should have maintenance, fuel, and liability savings based on this, of at least about ten thousand dollars.
Well, if the only thing we did was bring the maintenance supervisor back into operations and maintenance full-time, we'd have to fill the, the driving void. So either way, there would be an increase to the budget by at least that amount.
If we kept the bus?
Yeah, although the things being equal, maintenance supervisor comes, is not driving, somebody has to drive.
Somebody has to drive.
We, if we hire somebody to drive, there's, we're going to be increasing the budget by that amount. The alternative is, we contract that service out, and then we should be able to compare our total cost of contracted services to the total cost of owning and operating and running our own and driving our own bus. Those are, those are the things to compare, right? And I think that's what we're struggling with, is we don't have those two clear pieces of fruit in our hand. I mean, and I, I don't think it makes sense to look at those two things on a, on a sort of one-year basis, because we need to understand our five to ten-year costs for owning the bus versus contracting it out. You know, contract, transportation companies don't make money because their buses are less expensive, but they have the ability to spread their resources. So I, I mean, I don't, I just, I don't have, I don't object to the idea of bringing the maintenance supervisor back in. I just want to know what the actual implications are.
Right. And, and, you know, like you said, it's not, you can't look at this year to year to see what the savings is, you've got to look long-term.
If there are any.
Right.
Maybe it's a wash.
Maybe there isn't, right? I mean, we got, we-
Yeah, I, I think-
We're going to spend more anyway, because we're not using this position for part-time driving and part-time operations, we're using it for full-time operations. Either way, it's an increase. If that's necessary, then that's necessary, but I wanted to understand what the options are for transportation before we make that decision. I don't know if we have the luxury of time to do that right now.
Yeah. Okay.
For a budget purpose, maybe it doesn't matter, right? I mean, if we're going to, if we know there's got to be an increase because we need the maintenance supervisor full-time anyway, then the budget goes up. So maybe this increase is what it needs to be, we just don't know how we're going to spend it, whether it's contracted services or our own bus yet. I mean, it'd be nice to have that more tailored to a real number, but either way, it sounds like the budget has to increase for this purpose of bringing the operations supervisor back.
I mean, we can certainly come back and, and, you know, provide data on, you know, a ten-year or the life of a bus. I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about, probably, is looking at the life of a bus and what it costs to run a bus. I know from talking to many superintendents and from, from reading, and I don't have anything right now here to, to give you, but the reason most go to contracted services is they run the numbers and it's, it's, is actually a savings to farm it out than it is to have your own bus fleet. That doesn't mean some school districts don't still have their own bus fleet. We all used to have our own bus fleets back in the day, and slowly, this is nationwide, you know, we're run by two or three companies across the entire country. Betcha first student and a couple others.
But ten years ago, we decided we needed a bus for this school. And before we walk away from that idea, we want to understand why we no longer need that, or that's no longer a good idea. Which is a totally separate question from whether or not we need the maintenance supervisor back in the building full-time. You know, that's the reason for the increase, and there's the increase.
Yeah. I think they're connected, and I think one, one begot the other in terms of thinking about this year and this budget and-
Are there other personnel issues that are driving the, the need to have the, the maintenance supervisor? I mean, why now?
Yeah.
Is some, did something else happen? Can we find personnel savings somewhere else if we are suddenly going to have his time back in here and he's good at his job and performing well, then we should be able to?
We, you, what we realize is better maintenance and custodial services for the building. When you, when you staff a building and you decide, are you going to have, are you going to have two people for a building this size during the day, or are you going to have three, or are you going to have one? You make a decision then, based on what they're able to do during that day on how frequently a number of maintenance tasks might be performed.
Well, if we're paying overtime, if we're paying overtime in maintenance right now, then there's a need.
But, but what, we should be seeing a reduction in overtime, and we should be seeing a reduction in here somewhere. I'm seeing no reductions, and that is very frustrating to me. And, and the, every time we've talked to our central office maintenance supervisor, he raves about how great our staff here at Mary Hogan is and how that he uses them in other schools because they're so great and they do the best job of any place in the ACSU. And so I, I guess I'm, I'm still, I'm surprised, I completely understand and agree with wanting to keep somebody who is paid and hired as a maintenance supervisor to be the maintenance supervisor. And it never did make sense to me that his time was split between these things. But if we're bringing him back in full-time, we're adding a half-time person to, to, effectively we are, because half of his time right now is used for another purpose. So I'm, I, I just don't see the factors that are, where, where are we going to see some savings? Our building is apparently in really good repair and good shape.
It is in, it is in good shape, it is in good repair, and it's well-maintained. It will, with this change, it will be, it will be better so. There, there are things that, that many of us may have noticed, and it might be around exterior maintenance. When you add, when we add flower boxes to the garden, we increase the amount of time it takes to mow and trim that space. When we add trees with borders, we increase, we increase the time it takes to mow those sections of, those sections of the lawn that we're responsible for. There, we have done some things on the exterior that have required, that now require a bit more time. We're trying to streamline those as best we can, but they, there's a, there's a, I think there's a demonstrated need to have the maintenance, the maintenance person here full-time. We don't have a, we don't have a ready contingency right now if the custodian who does crossing is out, we're looking for someone else to cover that crossing responsibility. This gives us a contingency for that. And the same, the, the additional time that we would have with a person who's here full-time, it happened in small and some large ways, but it's across, it, it will be helpful for us in maintaining the school.
Okay. I think timing-wise, we have to pretty much move on the budget tonight, because we are up against a really tight deadline this year for a number of reasons. So I guess, what is the pleasure of the board?
I think Jason's, I mean, if we're, I think Jason's point of, we know it's going to be an increase, and whether it's an increase in hiring someone to drive our own bus, or personally that have to Betcha. You know, it's going to be an increase, and the current budget as it's shown has an increase. So I, you know, I, I think it's hard to know if that increase is the appropriate amount, but without additional information, it's what we've got to go on.
Yeah, I agree with what Jason said too, about it's an increase and you need your maintenance supervisor, and maybe it's more, we don't want the liability of the bus anymore. Maybe that's, you know, part of the whole thing, really. But this, this is what we should do.
So you two are comfortable with other? Jason, it sounds like you're comfortable with?
I think I'm okay with the numbers. I, I'd like to see, with sort of the understanding, the caveat, that I'd like to see a better fleshed-out proposal for how we're going to address the transportation needs once we shift our maintenance supervisor back into the building full-time. I think it would be useful to understand that, so that we can make sure that all of the possible need are being met in a way that makes sense. the possible need are being met in a way that makes sense. Because if, if there are resource issues with that, we need to know that.
Amy? Are you comfortable with what's right before us right now?
I think so. I agree, it would be nice to have more, like a 10-year set of numbers, because you do have to average in the cost of buying a new bus in three years. And, you know, it may increase now, but then we're not spending $70,000 out of some fund three years from now to buy another bus, so...
Lorraine?
Yeah, I mean, I never could understand why the maintenance supervisor was driving bus part-time. It didn't really make good sense to me of his time. But, and if you guys think this is the way to go, then I certainly, I will support that decision.
Okay.
It would be very easy for us to, at our next meeting, you know, come back to show you kind of what the costs in terms of the 10 or 20-year, and probably it's the life of the bus.
Well, it's not necessarily even the 10 or 20-year. It's also the sort of, what are the implications for, I mean, we should see some, we should see some savings, and we're not seeing it. So I'm curious why. I mean, I, I would just take a little bit of money out of this budget. I think it's too high. I think it's over-budgeted. And I would say that, you know, this operations and maintenance budget should come down by at least $10,000, if not more. Because I, I just, if this is really even partly accurate, we should see $10,000 savings somewhere, and we don't.
Where would you take it out of?
I would take it probably out of, which line item? Well, some out of salaries, and then we should probably see something out of liability and facilities maintenance manage? Oh, that's, no, that's the central office thing.
Some out of salaries because...
Overtime.
Oh.
It should be over, we should have, and we shouldn't have to have the subs, because we have now him here full-time.
Overtime's probably not in that line, though. I think the overtime was probably paid beyond a, is that right, Tom?
Well, but the driver for the increase in salaries was moving the portion of the maintenance supervisor's salary that was being paid for somewhere else back into salaries, if he's not driving. That's...
Right, so we wouldn't, we should increase the salary.
Correct. Because the salary benefits for the driver, in 1415, that was, that was $14,249, was his, his portion of the salary that had, that came back into this budget. That's where a good bit of it's going back in to drive that $11,000 increase. That's where...
Well, what you said before was the 9437. That's out of purchased transportation, is his salary going into operations and maintenance. But we don't know what the overtime differential would be.
Right, because he's, he's, he's working extra on the order of a quarter to a half-an-hour a day on school days.
Right. So if he's no longer driving, at least that should be eliminated.
That's the building, the building control system.
Oh, the, okay.
Right? I mean, if he's no longer driving, at the very least, his overtime should be eliminated by this change.
Correct. The only, the only caveat I'd throw in is that, that there will be times in a given year when something happens.
Right, but on average, his driving is more than the amount of overtime on a daily basis.
Yes.
But was his overtime never budgeted in the first place?
No, it would have been, I think it was all paid for within, within salaries and in, in those purchase transport, in that purchase transportation services line item.
We were basically buying overtime for him for purchase transportation services?
It ended up being the, it was the portion of his day, which was both the regular portion of his day and the small portion that was overtime, that he was driving and not in the building.
And that's what you budgeted in the purchase transportation services to cover that time?
Yes.
Would have been his regular hourly rate for some small part of that, and his overtime hourly rate for some small part of that as well, yeah.
We wouldn't lump overtime into the salary line, though.
You would not?
I don't know.
That would be a separate line item?
People's, yeah, I mean...
Or, how would we see that in the budget?
We don't normally...
It's at extra budget cost?
Usually you don't, yeah, I mean, normally you don't necessarily, you staff it.
It's in variance.
You don't budget for overtime. I mean, this is an unusual case.
Right, because it's regular usage.
Right.
Yeah.
Overtime shouldn't be predicted. You should be...
Right, that's my problem. So we've been buying his overtime in our transportation budget.
But Jason, we've got, within that salary line item, there's some other, there are a couple hundred hours in there of summer custodial help that we often, that we hire typically in a given summer. There may be some painting that we're doing on the exterior of the building that might be beyond what the custodial maintenance staff can do, given summer responsibilities. And like I said, we've also added in a contingency for custodial subs, if we, if we deem it necessary.
Which should be lessened by this change.
Yeah, you shouldn't be needing to add a half of an extra person on your custodian staff, essentially, and contingency hours, that you're, that's, that's just adding a lot. And I, if I recall from a few years ago, Lorraine and Jason, you may remember, I think we added a night custodian a couple years ago, or a half-time night custodian to the budget. So we've increased our custodian budget fairly significantly. We have like two full-time night custodians, too.
We have three.
We have three.
Did we add somebody? I remember summer help. I don't remember adding a...
I think we added a, at least a half-time night custodian within the last five years.
Not in my recollection.
Okay, I, yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but...
I don't remember that, but I do remember...
We, we did add, yeah, there was some, there was some additional, we've been adding some custodial maintenance resources, and they've been, they've been addressed in, like, we've been seeing that reflected in the reports from Eric Warren, in terms of what those are, sort of some of the results that those are providing to us, but...
Plus, we were, we added Eric, who was supposed to take some pressure off our custodian maintenance, our maintenance supervisor.
So how many sub-hours are we budgeting for?
I think we have $2,000.
In salaries?
In salaries. Additional for...
So that's for custodial subs. So I would agree with Ruth, that we shouldn't have a need for custodial subs if they're having a whole .5...
Well, but that's different, because if he's sick, he's sick, whether or not he's there half the year or the whole day, if he's sick, he's sick, right? I mean, that's what you're budgeting for, right?
Is that what the sub is for, or is the sub for additional work that comes up?
There will be times when either the day custodial staff or the night custodial staff has a sickness, a sickness or an injury, where we don't have sufficient staff to meet the needs of the building. And this allows us to sub for that person. It doesn't remove anybody else's responsibilities during the day or during the evening.
I mean, it's just, if you look at this budget from the 2014-15 actuals to the 2016-17 proposed, it goes up $100,000. It's a huge increase in two years.
And where, overall budget or in the...
No, just the, just the operations and maintenance budget. Goes up by $100,000 in two years. That's, you know, that's a huge increase.
Mostly in construction services.
So is that Eric?
Part of it's Eric, or our maintenance manager. Let's not use names.
But that's, but we pay part of his position.
Right, but we're paying the largest amount of all the elementary schools, because we're the biggest. So that's a 16%, 16.4% increase over two years in this budget. We didn't add, we didn't add square footage to the budget, or to the building.
There's...
What's the construction services line?
Construction services.
26450.
Right, so Eric provided a recommendation that was submitted to the board, that it has the building controls.
Okay.
And so, getting, getting those here and in, and upgrading the software, the monitors, the software and the hardware, a large portion of that's going to be a one-time, a one-time fee, about $27,800.
At least save some things in efficiency overtime.
Right, and it gives us, it gives you better monitoring. And once those monitors are purchased, once the software and hardware are purchased, then for the life of that hardware and the monitors, you'll, you'll then see a save, you'll then see a reduction of that amount in, in subsequent years. But again, I'm not sure, I think this may be a two, this may be a two-year increase that you'll see, and then a reduction once all the monitoring and software changes, and hardware changes happen.
I mean, the big drivers of that two-year change are salary benefits, construction services, supplies, basically, are the, those are the, those are the big changes.
Yeah, and we've seen a drop in our fuel and propane, and those costs down at the bottom. So we've, you know, there've been large increases in other areas as we've saved in fuel costs. It's, it just, it just doesn't seem right to me that this budget is increasing this much, and that you're asking for this much more custodian services above what we already have in reality. When we've added a maintenance supervisor, we've added nighttime services. Now you're asking for moving a half-time position back into this budget. It's just, seems like a lot to me.
The big increase was, was last year, you know, from 610 to 694. I think this year's overall, given the fact that we're bringing someone back in, is not quite as big of a jump.
Yeah, and part of the driver last year was there was a $15,000 increase, or $14,000 increase in oil, which you probably won't realize, but...
Equipment, whatever the equipment line is.
More in construction services. So we went up by $9,000 in construction services last year, and now we're going up another $27,000. So we're, we really need $36,000 more in construction services this year versus two years ago.
The combination that we're paying for in coming year are the control systems, hardware, software and the unders, and that'll be three new, three new sets of windows, room windows, approximately $15,000.
Which is a project you started this year, was it this year?
And that's what drove the, that's what drove the 21, almost $22,000 up to the 30. That increase, a significant portion of that in the current year was the one set of construction projects.
But you did how many rooms this year? Two?
We did, I believe we did three.
So it should be level funded if you're doing another three. You shouldn't need another amount of money for that. So the $27,000 is, is all the...
Controls.
Controls.
We can, in a subsequent meeting, invite Eric to come and talk through this. That would probably be helpful, to just give you an overview of, you know, work he's doing, and a little bit more deep digging on some of these line items.
Well, we received his information before, and this, the control tech piece was on here. I think that number, that $27,800 number is familiar. I don't think that's a...
Right, no, that's not new. I mean, we've seen that, yeah, that's not new.
I guess...
Without that, there's a decrease.
Yeah, I mean, well, but it certainly does seem high. I'm concerned that our change in transportation might end up costing us more than we might think, if we go to contracted services, because of some of those non-standard items. I'd like to see a better analysis of what, of what we're driving for in a given year. That would be useful, I think. Because I'm worried that those contracted costs could be quickly higher than anticipated if, if we're not accounting for those as thoroughly as we could be. I just don't want to be not providing critical services to folks because we didn't analyze it well enough, or because we cut before we could do that. That's, that's my concern.
Well, I think as, as you suggested earlier, we could certainly decouple the two things we're talking about, and next month come forward with, you know, a full analysis of, you know, a little bit more kind of tracking of how we're using the bus, for what kinds of things, how much that's costing us, and then looking at Betta and what they would provide, along with any other service that we would need to use to fill in, things that Betta would be using.
Yeah, and I think that passing the budget tonight doesn't mean that we approve selling the school bus. That's a separate question, too, that we need to talk about in the context of this analysis.
And then what do we do with those funds? Do they go back to the McJillan Fund where they came from? Do we put them into...
Yeah.
So I think that's a, that's a different conversation.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think that replenishing the McJillan Fund makes a lot of sense. That's what we bought it from. I mean, so I think we can have that conversation next month and hope that we get some better analysis from our administration. That remained, but I still remain concerned about this maintenance budget. It seems to me that we've been adding a lot, and we've been adding staffing and construction costs over the last few years, and that we continue to add staffing in, and I don't, I don't hear the justification for it. Or what I'm hearing, I'm not buying.
You have my recommendation. You know, I just point out that the operations and maintenance went up here, went up 2% from prior year, proposed for 1617 to the current budget of year. In a year where we've got a 7.9% driver in healthcare and a 3% driver on base salaries. We had some significant new purchases, purchases in terms of construction services, but we don't, we're debating it at this point.
So Ruth, are you, or will you be shortly looking for a motion to either approve this budget or to decrease this budget by $10,000?
Yeah, we need to move yes. Thank you, Lorraine. I would entertain a motion.
Move that we accept the budget.
I second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Do we need to say, approve the budget for the amount to be technically...
Yeah, probably I do. Sorry. I do. I move that we accept the proposed 2016-17 budget for the amount of $7,391,271. Did I miss anything?
No. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I forgot to mention, Billy said that he wanted to vote for the budget. Did he contact you about his proxy vote?
He did, and I am levying his proxy vote, and the affirmative for the budget as proposed.
Okay. Can you record that for the record, Lorraine?
I'm doing it.
Oh, sorry, Amy.
It's okay.
Thank you, Ruth, for my...
Yeah, yeah. We set the tuition rate last time, so that made it onto this agenda as well, but we did that last time, so we don't need to do that. Our next meeting, well, I did, I did just want to mention one thing for the home audience, to the extent that they're... Oh, we have to approve the warning. Oh, right, sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, let's do that. I'm sorry.
So the warnings, you can see, are a little different this year. We are in a different mode. On the 29th, which is the night we'll be with the town, our articles one through six, this includes the...
This includes the Article Four, which is the question regarding the Mary Johnson Children's Center, and Article Five, which is moving 150,000 from Ed Reserve to the general fund as revenue for this current, this current fiscal, coming fiscal year. If you turn it over to the second page, the warning outlines, and this is required by Act 46, and we got an, an updated memo from the, the Agency of Education regarding what it should look like. So this article looks a little different than what you've seen in the past and also has the one-time purchase of an article we're requesting be moved into the general fund, which changes the equalized pupil spending. So if there's an article within your budget, or not within your budget, but within your, I guess, within your proposed budget that requires voter approval and it changes the equalized pupil, you have to do this two-part Article One. And so the first part here is what would happen if the voters turned down Article Four on the previous page, the 150,000. The second part is if they do approve Article Four. So the, the odd thing about this is that they'll be, for some, if they come to the meeting the night before and act on the article, then the next day they go to vote and then they see the language. But the, the purpose of this is, from the state's perspective, is to provide more transparency. I think it kind of provides more befuddlement, but...
I wish we could mention that even though it's an increase, the tax...
The tax impact, yeah.
The tax impact is still a decrease.
Well, I think that in the presentation that night, that's what, I mean, that's, that's, I think, where it's really important that we get the word out to, yeah, people show up and we're able to talk about, this is how all of this works.
And that we have an increase in students.
By a lot.
By a lot.
Yeah, how much does it do for our transparency to not tie these numbers to our student population?
Yeah, we have an 11% increase in our students.
Well, it is not meaningful data.
Not at all. And of course, it's the first year that we're going to be separating out the voting so that people aren't going to get the full information before they vote.
Is there, can... There's, there's no way you can add, you can add...
This is like boilerplate.
Complete boilerplate. Everyone has to...
So we will need to make sure that our, our town clerk understands the implications of this because she'll get a lot of questions. And to the extent that we're able to be in the vicinity to answer questions, it's going to be really helpful for this and for the whole article's conversation. So to, to the, to the best of your ability, if you can make yourselves available on March 1st, it would be helpful, I think, to have as many of us around as possible.
Would you like to talk about those ones?
Around, meaning like hanging out at the gym where people are voting?
So, yeah, I think we're going to need to station people. We have to be a certain way away from it, but people will, to be able to answer questions on the articles and the budget and just be there to make sure people understand what they're voting on. We can't influence their vote. We can't tell them how to vote, but we can help them understand what is in the article. So the, the Articles Three, oh, so it's Article Three. Oh, I need to change that in what I sent you.
Oh, okay.
Because I mentioned Article One and Two.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe we should serve, should have a school board tailor serving coffee.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea. We could have like the... Maybe we could borrow that hot chocolate hut and have it out there. I'm serious because we, this is going to be so confusing for people, so I gotta...
Let's take sand off it.
How many articles are there in other school districts? Are there also four? Is this going to be three and four in all of the?
Pay for that.
Yeah.
It will be three and four. Okay, so...
Actually, it continues. No, see, because other ones aren't, without, don't have Australian ballot.
They're going to not have this Article One.
Yeah, it's, it's on the other side.
It's going to be two and three.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, Peter and I are having a discussion about, so the, the charter committee is going to have a write-up in all of the annual reports for all of the towns to, that explain briefly, well, within one page, the art, what for us are Article Three and Four. And, but UD Three will also be on the same ballot. So are they still going to be three and four when we add in UD Three? I'm going to have, I'm going to take out all references to articles' numbers.
Yeah, we'll have to.
I will try to be there.
Yeah, so, so what I, in the write-up I wrote, I referenced Article One and Article Two in the unification articles because that's the way our legal counsel has referenced them, as one and two, but they're clearly, for us, three and four. For other school districts, they're going to be two and three. When we add in UD Three to the mix, it's still going to be the Middlebury warning. So are we going to have those articles on our ballot twice? How's it going to work? We got to ask Chris this.
They wouldn't, yeah, they wouldn't.
Okay. So Article Three and Four are the required articles for the unification vote, the grades, the Board of Directors, the, the makeup of the Board of Directors and the assumption of debt and property. The final report for the charter committee is on file at all clerks' offices and it's obviously online, too. And, and then the Article Four is the voting of the, of the directors. And the names will be in there for each of the votes. So it's obviously going to be confusing, so we can all be there to answer questions and we can take turns.
I'll, I'll shift today.
We should set up a table in June.
So next meeting, we'll talk about shifts and how we're going to work, work it, yeah.
I thought we were meeting at 6 o'clock. Is that until 6:30?
No, it's hard at 6.
No, no, yeah, they...
6 for the, for the art, for Articles One through Seven.
Oh, okay, I'm like, oh.
We changed that, right?
We did, yeah, we want, because town meeting starts at 7.
Right, well, that's what I, I didn't even notice the top part.
Yes, no.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, it's confusing, yeah. So even we're confused. So, so voters, our annual meeting is 6 o'clock on Monday, February 29th. It's in February, not April this year. And it's at 6 o'clock in the town gym, directly preceding the town meeting. Please come so we can explain all of this to you. All right, so we have to approve the warning.
Move that we approve the warnings.
Any questions? Does anyone see any problem with them? I mean, aside the fact that they're confusing.
It sounds like we don't really make choice, I mean...
Yeah. No, but any, there's no like typo or anything. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, okay.
Is there a second? I second it, sorry. Kind of mumbled it.
So will you take care of Shane signing these?
Yeah.
Okay, so just to, we set the tuition rate last time. I just wanted to, for the home audience, let everybody know that this will be a huge election year for us and we will be electing a new proposed school dis, school board. There will be seven members from Middlebury out of the 13. We have to elect all 13 now. That will not happen in, in subsequent years. It will be three, two, three or four each year, not, not 13. But because it's the first year we're electing them, they're all elected at the same time. For Middlebury, there are two, two-year seats, help me, Lorraine, if I get this wrong. Two two-year seats, two, two, two one-year seats and three three-year seats. So two, two and...
Two one, two two and three states.
Two one, two two, three, three.
They'll all eventually convert to being three-year.
They'll all eventually be three years, right. And this will be, so, but for this election, we'll be electing people for specific terms. So if you're interested in running for school board, you can pick up tuition, petition, signature forms at our town clerk's office. See Ann Webster is our town clerk. We're, we also have three seats up for election slash reelection to this board, which will continue to exist in its current form should the unification vote fail or in its current form for a year and a half while we transition to a single board. So we have three seats for this board up as well. You have to pick up two petitions if you want to run for both boards and create, get signatures for both boards. You need 30 signatures by Monday, January 25th of registered voters in the town of Middlebury. So if you have any questions, feel free to call any of us or email any of us and we can, you can find our contact information on the ACSU website. Anything else I should let people know?
That we're also electing from Cornwall, don't we?
Correct, oh, right, yes, correct. So the other six members of the proposed new board come from, one each from the surrounding towns that make up the ACSU, Bridport, Cornwall, Ripton, Salisbury, Shoreham and Waybridge, one each from those towns. And Middlebury voters will be voting on each of those seats as well. So everybody in the ACSU will vote on all of the school board seats. So from those towns, they will vote on our seats as well, the Middlebury seats. We are hoping to plan a, we are hoping to have a school board candidate forum that will be televised and also covered by various local media so that you can come and meet the nominations and the candidates for school board. And the details of that are TBA. Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you for staying with us this long. All right, anything else from you, Peter or Tom?
Nope.
Okay, excellent. Thanks, guys, and...
So we're not doing the, set the tuition rate?
We did it last time.
We did it, yeah, that was...
Yeah.
It likes to be with the other two, so it just joined them.
Yeah, that's, they go together. All right, motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Thank you all. Thanks, Dick. Thanks for staying with us, Tom.